Good evening and welcome to the June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. Like to welcome you all tonight. Almost got a full house tonight. A lot of interesting things going on in the county. And we'll get right into it with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Eddie Harris, would everyone please stand? If you're able.
Let us pray. Our heavenly father, we thank you for the opportunity together here tonight to pass the county budget. We've prayed for wisdom and guidance as we do the people's business. We pray that we will make the right decision tonight that would be pleasing unto you, dear lord, and let us be wise steward to the taxpayers' money. Dear lord, we pray for our county. We pray for its citizens, dear lord. We pray for our churches and our law enforcement, dear lord, and look over and watch and guide them as they go about their business. And we ask that you forgive us for our sins, lord. We ask for you to, to uh watch over our young people in our public schools, dear lord, and we pray for a spiritual awakening in our country. And then in our young people today, dear lord, and, and all of our citizens, we ask all of these things in your name, Jesus Christ, our lord and savior. Amen.
Glad you're here. By the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. First, we have the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker. Second, second by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, the approval of June the second, twenty twenty-five, and June the third, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. I'll make the motion to approve those minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hyatt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is the consent agenda, and I'll ask county manager Chris Knopf to expound on the four bullet points.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item are the tax department end of month summaries, charges, and reports. Next item is the board's approval of the energy, energy outreach program plan for the Department of Social Services. Third item is a FEMA PA Hurricane Helene grant project ordinance. The final item is budget amendment number seventeen, and this is end of fiscal year various department cleanup, similar to the budget amendment from the last meeting. And that's the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right, so I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Hyatt. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is special recognition, the honorable Mr. Gary Brown. Uh, we're going to come down front, and I'd like to ask the Board of Elections and any family member, all the family members, please come up with him.
Michelle, how are you?
That cleaned out most of the crowd. Y'all come on up. Find your spot. Come on back here, Gary. You stuck out all the way by yourself. Come back here with your friends. Gary, it's an honor to recognize you tonight. The County of Surrey, Gary Brown Board of Elections is hereby presented the certificate of recognition for your dedication and service to the citizens of Surrey County for fifty years with the Board of Elections. Your service with integrity and pride each election year has shown your love for your county and your country. Your tireless efforts to help the citizens of Surrey County will be an inspiration for generations to come. Presented this the sixteenth day of June, twenty twenty-five by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Mark Marion Chairman, Bill Goins Vice Chairman, Eddie Harris, Melissa Hyatt, and Van Tucker. Congratulations, my friend. And I was gonna, I was gonna say, anybody's got any remarks to say about Gary, and then we'll give him about ten minutes or fifteen, whatever.
First of all, did we surprise you?
Yes.
We wouldn't got you here any other way. Um, I think Chairman Marion said it best. It's um, what he has given to this community for more than fifty years in elections is because he does it with compassion. He does it with passion, and you can better bet if, if you see this gentleman working in your precinct, he's gonna do it the right way. It's gonna be done the lawful way, whatever that might be. Um, I'll say a few things about the GM because that's what we refer to Gary as, as our general manager. That's been our joke since Sydney and I started in twenty nineteen. I really think Jan Davis put that title on you, but she knew what she was talking about. So we call him the GM affectionately. Um, in more recent years, in, in two thousand four, he was named the vote, I guess I could put my glasses on, it would help, the voting equipment technician. And then, um, when I came on in twenty nineteen, we started early voting captains. And Gary sort of got voluntold that he was gonna be the captain of the Dobson site. He was not happy for a few days, as Gary does not love change, but what Gary does do, he adapts, and he accepts it. And then he quits complaining, and he rolls on. Um, and early voting captain, just to let you all know in the audience that may not know, that's fifteen to seventeen days of fifteen hour days. Every day, no break, and the chief judge, or at that time we called them captains, they cannot leave. So, you know, what Gary has given out of his own time, and, and when you equate that out to what the pay is per hour, it, it's not much. Um, Gary sets up the day before election day, he breaks down the day after. He sets up for all of our early voting sites, he breaks down that Saturday after early voting closes. And there's a very small turnaround time to where we got to get the trucks loaded to get back out on Monday. And Gary is um, he's the main part of that whole process. So when you get to vote at your precinct on election day, a big part of it is because of Gary. Um, also, Gary is the epitome of service. He's passionate about voting. He don't care how you vote, who you vote for. He wants you to vote. And he exudes that. When you meet Gary, whether you're meeting him at the Board of Elections or anywhere else, he's gonna mention that to you. And um, out of all of our twenty-three election day precincts, Gary is the only precinct who sets up on election morning. That's because Gary can handle it. He takes it in stride. And for those in the room that know what that entails, that's a lot on election morning, when your mind is swirling about everything else that could happen. But I will say one funny story on Gary. It was twenty twenty election. We were a little sleep deprived, all of us. We were exhausted. We hadn't went home. And it was the morning, I don't know if the polls had opened, they were getting ready to open. Gary called Sydney. He said, the ballot scanner is gone, the ballot scanner app is gone. It's gone. Now Gary is not the most technological person. And Sydney said, okay, just FaceTime me. Just FaceTime me. It's gotta be there, Gary. So Gary FaceTimed Sydney, which was a hoot. And um, Gary had somehow put the app in the recycle bin. We still don't know how he did that, but he did it. But anyway, Sydney got him all straight, and life was good after that, right? Yeah. But in all seriousness, we do thank Gary for his many, many years of dedicated service. And I do hate tonight that Brenda could not be here. This was supposed to be done the week before she passed. So, but she is watching. She's here in spirit. She knows that we're, that's right. She's laughing real big that we all got you. So, uh, but, but we do thank you, Gary, for, for your service and for the person you are. Thank you.
I appreciate this, and it was totally a surprise, but just remember this, it's a team effort, not just me. It's a big team of all parties and all workers, and we want to make sure that as they say, everybody votes the way they want to vote. It doesn't matter to us as long as they vote. And thank y'all so much for this. Thank you. All right, all the, all the commissioners are gonna go back to the back and family, all get back up here. All the family gather around, Gary. We're gonna take a photo, and maybe we can get Ryan to put that in the paper. Congratulations, Gary. All right, family. Y'all know who's taller than the others, so squeeze in tight. I want y'all on the photo. Somebody take two steps to your right, try to set up a podium for me. One, two, three, four, and Van Tucker next. Mr. Marion, nevermind, there you are. Mr. Harris, could you take a half step to your left, please? Thank you, sir. All right, you're taking several. Melissa, can you take a half step to your right, please? All right, one, two, three, big smile for me. Yeah, good job. Again, Gary, congratulations and well deserved. Appreciate you all coming out tonight. All right, moving along. The next is our open forum. At this time, we'll have three minutes. Uh, you can talk just about any subject you want to talk about, as long as it don't get too bad. But uh, uh, the floor is open now for open forum, but if you're here for the rezonings, that'll come later, okay? But uh, anyone, anyone for open forum? Laura? No? Yeah, thanks. Right. All right, I'll now close the open forum. And we will now recess our regular meeting and open up the Surrey County Airport Authority meeting. And I'll turn it over to Commissioner Bill Goins, the chairman of the Surrey County Airport Authority.
We'll call the meeting of the Mount Airy Surrey County Airport Authority meeting to order, and we, we have two, two items, the airport budget. And I'll call Lauren Neely and George Crater to the podium.
This is the budget that you received back in March. There has never been revisions or changes. Uh, as, as Laura has stated, it is about a one percent increase from last year's budget. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of the line items that changed, but most of the changes were really in projection of expenses for the new terminal, utilities, all those types of things, really. That's where that was our only increases, so. Oh, and the amount for the budget is nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars.
I, I will open a public hearing uh on the uh, Mount Airy Surrey County Airport Authority uh, budget. Uh, anybody here to speak on that can come forward and speak. All right, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, and just ask for a motion to adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six Mount Airy Surrey County Airport Authority budget. Motion by Commissioner Marion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hyatt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No, aye's had it. We have a capital project ordinance, uh, Lauren Neely.
This capital project ordinance amendment would be the only and last amendment to the partial parallel taxiway. And I'll just go ahead and tell myself, I actually did a budget amendment and forgot to include the capital project ordinance amendment. So this just cleans that up, um, makes the total appropriation two million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand and seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I still have a motion to accept this project ordinance amendment.
Motion to accept the amendment.
Motion by Commissioner Hyatt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye's had it. Mr. Crater, would you just real, for just for the public and, and the folks in the audience, um, give us a, an update on the terminal, on the terminal building, just, just a real quick update?
Yes, sir. Our new terminal building, which is ninety-five hundred square feet, which will also, we're hoping to have a tenant of a restaurant along with, we're excited to have our economic development team being there with us. I think across the state, they have felt that the airports and economic development groups together has helped both. Uh, we'll, the, the new terminal is proceeding along very well. Uh, we're expecting completion of the building in October. Uh, shortly thereafter, all the parking lots and everything done, we plan on being in there by Thanksgiving. Uh, we expect that to be, uh, to help us on the draw for our larger planes and smaller planes. Uh, we already picking up a lot. You can tell that by fuel sales, uh, that's increased probably by thirty-five percent since last year. But the jet traffic obviously uh, has a lot to do with tourism, it has a lot to do with business. And we're, and the economic development is helping us make that more of a destination for those planes to be here and help the community and invest in the community. But we are excited. We invite anyone, please give me a call, come out there, we'd love to walk you through, let you see what we're doing and what our opportunities are out there. Yes, sir.
Our next scheduled meeting date is July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. I have a motion to adjourn the Mount Airy Surrey County Airport. Motion by Commissioner Marion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hyatt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Meeting's adjourned.
All right, we'll reconvene the regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. Next on the agenda is the rezoning of, is ZCR twelve sixty-five, Terramore Development. And that is from rural agriculture to community business conditional. And I'd like to ask Adrian Gardner, Development Services Director, to expand on that one.
Okay. Terramore Development LLC is requesting to rezone two point seven six acres located at seven seventy-seven Copeland School Road from RA to community business conditional for the use of general merchandise store. The property is located in an open area of low to medium density development at the intersection of two sixty-eight and Copeland School Road in Dobson with direct road frontage along both roads. Four parcels across NC two sixty-eight totaling eleven point three two acres are zoned community business conditional with one two point nine acre parcel in the vicinity zoned highway business conditional and one two acre parcel in the vicinity zoned rural business. The closest existing Dollar General is located in the Fairview area of Dobson and is approximately four point three miles to the west. Special requirements set forth in one fifty-four dot zero zero eight, section sixty-four have been met as follows. There are residential uses abutting the property, therefore double setbacks are required on the side and rear setbacks as shown on the proposed site plan. Outdoor lighting requirements are noted on the site map. The parcel abuts residential zoning, therefore buffering is required as shown on the proposed site plan. Staff communicated via phone and email with the applicant in April and May of twenty twenty-five. The applicant requested community business conditional zoning. The land use plan twenty forty identifies this property as a rural area classification defined as lands whose primary use is for agriculture, low density residential, forestry, mining, water supply, et cetera, based on their natural resources potential and limitations. Also, lands where future needs are not currently classified. The board should consider if the request follows consistency principles pertaining to isolated businesses providing amenities not available in the immediate vicinity. The board should further take into consideration whether or not the business will be non-intrusive on the surrounding rural agricultural residential uses and blend well with the existing residential agricultural and rural business framework of the community. The planning board recommends approval of this zoning amendment because the amendment is consistent with the Surrey County land use plan, is reasonable, and is in the public interest because, number one, there are other commercial uses adjacent to and in the area such as four parcels across from this parcel totaling eleven point three two acres that are zoned community business conditional with one two point nine acre parcel in the vicinity zoned highway business conditional and one two acre parcel in the vicinity zoned rural business. Number two, the brick foundation and hardy board and general layout of the facility on the site plan will be consistent with the rural character of the community. Number three, the site plan contains sufficient buffering to complement the rural districts and rural uses in the area. Number four, allowing a Dollar General in this community at this location provides the community with the ability to buy a wider range of goods that are available in the immediate area. Number five, the application is consistent with five point six point four point one of the land use plan, and it encourages new businesses which will diversify the local economy. It also provides jobs. Number six, it is consistent with five point six point six point one that encourages mixed-use commercial development which is compatible with the surrounding residential uses. Number seven, it is consistent with five point six point six point two because the site plan provides the landscaping and buffering consistent with rural areas. And finally, number eight, the board finds that there will be negligible, if any, effects on surrounding property values. And at this point, I will turn it over to Deputy County Attorney Howard Jones to explain the conditions that were placed on this approval.
Thank you, Director. Um, and the board will see in, in the packet, a document that was executed June tenth, twenty twenty-five. The board will recall on prior zonings, we have worked out agreements and had difficulties with the petitioner following through and signing on that agreement. Uh, however, the uh, petitioner was true to their word. They offered these conditions in order to make it more uh, compatible with rural area, uh, as mentioned in the zoning ordinance. Uh, this is a reasonable condition and is fully within the board's authority to require it if petitioner consents. And the petitioner has. The, there are only two parts of this. One is that approximately forty-two inches of the base will be brick. The second is that after that, on the sides, and af- after that brick base, there will be hardy board on three sides that will be visible from Copeland and, and two sixty-eight, uh, facing north, east, and west. Planning board felt uh, that these conditions were reasonable and would make it compatible, compatible with the rural community. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Adrian or Howard? All right, you got one?
Were there um, any, I didn't see any uh thing in the information here that indicated that there was anybody at the planning board that spoke against this? Was anybody at the planning board spoken against this?
Uh, no one spoke at the planning board against this.
Okay.
Okay, I will open up a public hearing concerning ZCR twelve sixty-five. Is there anyone here to speak on before or against the rezoning? Good evening.
Evening. Uh, I'd like to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners and planning staff for having us here. Uh, my name's Gordon Kristoff with Terramore Development, uh, the applicant. Uh, I'm here tonight with Daniel Almazan, my colleague, and then our engineer, Justin Church with uh, Blue Ridge Environmental Consultants. Uh, just wanted to uh, state a couple of things here. Um, you know, Terramore's preferred developer for dollars and all, I think that's clear. Uh, the new store will bring seven to nine new full and part-time jobs to the community. Uh, the new store will increase the property's tax base to two point one million and uh, will bring an estimated one point five million in taxable sales annually. Um, and as the application states, um, thanks again, Adrian, uh, we uh, plan to do a conditional rezoning with those same, the brick base, hardy board top, um, and the shadow box fence surrounding the uh, the agricultural residential um, offer there. So, if there's any questions, uh, myself or my colleague or Justin would uh, love to answer those for you all.
I might have overlooked it, um, but will there be an entrance exit on both roads?
Uh, no, sir. Just on uh, Copeland School Road.
No entrance exit on two sixty-eight?
Nope, and we've had the uh, that um, preliminary um, site plan already approved and reviewed by the district engineer with NCDOT, so. Yep. Mm, yeah.
Any questions?
I'm just curious, do you know how many of these stores you have now in Surrey County? We, we have some, and I enjoy them. Do you know how many is in our county?
Uh, that's a great question. I actually don't have that off the top of my hand. Uh, I could definitely get that answer for you here in a minute.
No problem.
Okay.
I believe we're good.
All right, thank you all.
Anyone else? All right, okay, got one.
I ain't used to speaking.
Come on up.
Questions?
All right.
I'm bored.
But um, is it gonna be a, like, um, one that sells like produce and fresh meats? I'm Come on up and ask.
Come on up with him.
Need your name and phone number.
Yeah, name and phone number. I'm sorry, I forgot. Dale?
Uh, Dale Wall? Sorry. Dale Wall, nine, uh, three, three, six, nine, one, eight, six, seven, seven, six.
Good evening. My name's Daniel Almazan with Terramore Development. Now, uh, happy to see, see uh, the, your lovely faces again. Obviously, we've, we've been in front of you once or twice, right? So, so uh, yeah, i- it has been the, one of the new formats in order to have uh, fresh fruits and vegetables added to theirs. Now, now, in this case, this is a ninety-one hundred square foot store, just because the, the local community doesn't have quite as many rooftops as we would at some of the other, the, some of the other newer stores that we did that had a ten thousand, six forty square foot. And so those had, uh, like, expanded coolers, a little bit more of an offering, kind of like a, and all these would have those, those extra coolers. And so, uh, like, I know that they have, they have limited, but they are trying to bring those in just so that you have, have some fresher options available. If you have any other questions.
What about um, fuel pumps? Would that be an option? No?
No, it's, no. I mean, like, in, in fact, they, they have intentionally stayed away from any, any kind of fuel.
Okay, 'cause I know down in, in the south, they've got some stores.
I, I've seen some. Uh, we've got one store uh, that, let me think, oh, where's that? It's in Guilford County, um. I'll think of it a second, uh, that, that they took over from a Walmart neighborhood market that had gas there. And so they, they just happened to take over that facility and, and continue the pumps there, but, but typically, that's not their model.
Okay.
And, and actually, it wouldn't be a, an option here just because of the, the pumps and the, and the, the amount of parking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right, I'll now close the public hearing. Anyone, any more questions before we vote? All right, do I hear a motion on the rezoning of ZCR twelve sixty-five and the statement of consistency? To adopt the statement of consistency.
And also, uh, that would be, if the, if it's gonna be adopted, it would be adopted
With the condition, conditions?
With the conditions.
With the conditions, that's for them.
The conditions read by?
Mr. Chairman?
Deputy. Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve rezoning cases, ZCR one-two-six-five, Terramore Development LLC, from RA to community business conditional with the stipulations laid out in the consistency statement, the consistency principles. Uh, do I need to list those?
Uh, no, Commissioner.
Okay. And does that suffice for the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, that's my motion.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, and I'll, I'll second that one. And any, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. You know, we have some of these and communities kind of vary. I mean, you, you have some that are passionate for it and some of it or not, but this time, it seems like the Copeland community is very in favor of this. I've, I've heard no negative comments. I, I had a call today, but I missed it. I called them back, but they never did call me back, so. But congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next is ZCR twelve sixty-seven, residential general to community business conditional, Gospel Broadcasting Incorporated.
Right, so Gospel Broadcasting Incorporated is requesting to rezon one-point-five-seven acres located at Hyatt Road from residential general to community business conditional for the use of wired and wireless telecommunications carriers and towers. Property is located in an open area of medium-density development, predominantly residential, with commercial development adjoining the property. The adjoining parcel is zoned manufacturing industrial, consists of eleven-point-seven-five acres and houses Johnson Granite. The Surrey County landfill, also zoned MI, is approximately three-fourths of a mile to the west of this parcel. Special requirements for this use are set forth in one fifty-four dot zero zero eight, item sixty-eight. The applicant has complied with all requirements, however, the following matters requested are awaiting response. FAA study, FCC documentation, NEPA assessment, and certificate of insurance showing liability arrangements. Per documentation provided by the applicant, NCDOT does not have any objections or requirements regarding the proposed tower. NCDQ approval is not required on land disturbances less than one acre. Proposed tower is a single-use tower for a non-commercial FM radio station only. Property owner letter has been provided, serving as proof of ownership and authorization. Certificate of existing insurance and non-re requirement of indemnity document has been provided. Property does not fall with any viewshed documentation and tower removal surety bond estimate documentation. Staff communicated via phone and email with the applicant and property owner beginning in January of twenty-five. The property owner was offered two viable options from staff, ultimately deciding to pursue the request as presented. The land use plan two thousand and forty defines rural growth classification as lands where local government plans to accommodate medium-density development during the following fifteen-year period and where necessary public services will be provided. These areas will see the highest concentration of development in the county's planning jurisdiction. Land use plan consistency principle five-point-six-point-six-point-one encourages mixed-use commercial development where appropriate and where compatible with surrounding residential uses. And land use plan consistency principle five-point-six-point-six-point-five encourages new commercial development in areas of existing development, stating the areas should contain land uses that are mutually compatible and reinforcing in use and design. The board should consider if the request follows consistency principles pertaining to compatibility with surrounding residential uses and whether the area contains land uses that are reinforcing in use. The board should further take into consideration whether or not the business will be non-intrusive on the surrounding agricultural and residential uses and blend well with the existing residential agricultural and rural business framework of the area. The planning board recommends approval of this zoning amendment because the amendment is consistent with the Surrey County Land Use Plan, is reasonable, and is in the public interest because, number one, this business provides a benefit to the community with regard to providing access to local-based programming. Number two, the tower will enable a locally-owned and operated radio program to remain competitive. Number three, the footprint, height, and design of the tower is such that the effect visually on the surrounding landowners and the community in general will be minimal. Number four, the site plan contains sufficient buffering in terms of setbacks and also important large and tall trees, some of which are taller than the tower and base itself. This buffering will provide adequate buffering to the surrounding residential and rural uses. Number five, the application, if granted, is consistent with five-point-six-point-four-point-one of the land use plan that encourages new and expanding businesses which will diversify the local economy. Number six, it is consistent with five-point-six-point-six-point-one that encourages mixed-use commercial development where appropriate and where compatible with surrounding residential uses. Number seven, it is consistent with five-point-six-point-six-point-two with regards to buffering and/or landscaping where commercial development adjoins existing or planned residential areas. And finally, number eight, the applicant has a history of providing public service with regard to local government announcements and other programming which would be beneficial to the public. And I will again turn it over to Deputy County Attorney Howard Jones to go over conditions of this approval.
Thank you, Adrian. The conditions, well, first of all, just one note here on, on how we got here. Normally, cell towers and other communications towers are processed by applying for a special use permit from the Board of Adjustment. And it does, those applications do not make their way to this board normally. But in this case, the property needed to be rezoned and, because it was RR. And under the development ordinance, you have the option of rezoning it and then going back and getting a special use permit. But that's no longer favored under the general statutes. When you're going to rezone conditionally, the law calls for any special use requirements to be addressed in the, in the conditional rezoning. So all the normal requirements that we normally have under the tower ordinance have been incorporated into this application and as you can see in this binder. The other, other two things I would note, these conditions, one through four, are just normal conditions. And I don't know if, if any of the board has ever attended a Board of Adjustment hearing with regard to applications for towers, but there are a number of things that require bureaucratic approvals from the federal government and other agencies such as FAA certification, the FCC documentation, and NEPA compliance always takes a while. So it is not unusual to have those compliances come in after the actual approval and have approval be condition upon that. So there's nothing, there's nothing unusual here about that. Number two, certificate of insurance, we have a general letter from the insurer for the applicant. However, because the property's not yet been subdivided and they don't own it, they, we couldn't get an actual binding letter from the insurance carrier. Number five is also a little unusual. I just want to call your attention to that. The fifth condition, and again, the land, the applicant has, has agreed to this, requires subdivision of property. That's not the normal situation with regard to a tower. Most of what you see are these large companies that come in, they don't buy the property, they lease a very tiny footprint, just enough basically to get their trucks in there and, and get it done, and they, and they lease it. And they're not an owner of the property. This is a little different. Instead of a lease, the applicant is actually, is actually going to buy the property. They're a local, a local nonprofit who's been here for, I believe, decades, if I'm correct. And so there, they chose a different path. Instead of leasing the property, they will be the owner. And I just want to call that, that's why there will be required to subdivide the property. And why wasn't it subdivided until now? Well, because until you get the rezoning, there's no point in subdividing it. So that subdivision process will take place afterwards, and they have a very short timeframe to complete this in order to comply with the federal government in terms of their license. That's all. If you have any questions with regard to the conditions, I'll be happy to address.
Mister? The, so the FAA component, this is to your satisfaction likely to be looked upon favorable by the FAA. Is that, is that what I'm gathering from you?
Well, I'm now an engineer and I'm the application commissioner. I will note that the FCC had a, I think, a preliminary, and I'll let, I'll let the applicant address this. Back when Commissioner Marion, myself, Ed Wolves, and Adrian met with the applicant, we were supplied certain documentation with, from the FCC, which referenced the FAA. However, we did not have final documentation back yet from the FAA. And backing up a moment, this is also in the overlay district for the Mount Arrie Suri County Airport. However, the engineer has certified that the tower is short enough, including its base, that it complies with the overlay district. But with regard to the FAA itself, I've learned never to try to speak for the federal government because I'm never sure what they're going to do, Commissioner. So we'll just have to wait. The engineer, I believe, believes that it's pro forma and that there will be no problems, and I think the engineer can address that. But I don't like to guess about what the federal government is going to do.
It says towers may be constructed to a hundred and ninety-nine feet with a, if the Board of Adjustment grants a variance, it should not permit a tower to exceed a height three hundred feet. George, have you looked over this? Are you satisfied with this?
You know, I haven't seen anything, but I will get communications from the FAA if they have any issues. They will send that directly to me if they feel like that it is, you know, farther you get away, the higher that they could build. It's kind of a common sense zone out from the airport. And so, but no, sir. I think I also haven't got any alerts from the FAA, which I got when they built that tower east of the airport a couple of years ago. That one did not have a problem with height and penetrating zones.
And I believe, Commissioner, there, there are two height issues here. One is the actual height of the tower itself, including the base, and I believe that's eighty-five feet, including the base. So this is not a larger tower. That's number one. Number two, it is the height above sea level that the top of that tower will wind up being. And that's what, that's what is specified as a ceiling in the overlay district for the airport. And the, the engineer, and you'll see that on the site plan, has certified with, under seal from the engineer, that this tower will, will comply with that portion of the ordinance, that it will not exceed that number.
And, and you're saying this board can pass this tonight, contingent upon the fact that the FAA would, would sign off on it? Is that correct?
Yes, because if, if not, then, then the tower cannot proceed.
Okay, and when do we anticipate getting final documentation from the FAA?
I will have to let, let the petitioner's engineer address that.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Salute him.
Anyone else? All right, next I'd like to call up the applicant Ricky Cuthbert. Give us a brief description of what, what's going on here, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. It's my honor to stand before you. What we're trying to do, we are Gospel Broadcasting Incorporated. I serve as the president. We have owned and operated WYZD Radio here in Dobson for the last twenty, over twenty years. And we finally have a chance to go full-power FM with a five-thousand-watt FM station at ninety-point-nine on the FM dial in the non-commercial band. Here's the deal. There are four radio stations in Surrey County. There's WI FM in Elkin, which is a FM station. It's the only full-power FM in our county. The rest of us are AM. There are two AM stations in Mount Arrie and one here in Dobson, which is owned by us. The other two in Mount Arrie are owned by Mr. Epperson. These stations, all of our AM stations in the county run what's called FM translators. An FM translator can be up to two-hundred-and-fifty watts, but it's not a secure radio station. In other words, if a big power station that's, that's near that frequency gets a power increase or whatever, those stations, even like my translator, can be kicked off the air. So with this full-power FM that we're seeking to put up, it will be a permanent radio station. It cannot be removed from the air, of course, unless you get your license taken for some violation or something. So that's what we're seeking to do. Now, I can also speak a little bit to the FAA question. The Federal Communications Commission will not grant you a construction permit. Now, we have a construction permit to put this up. It's, it's public record. You can look it up. They will not grant you a CP if it's in violation of the FAA. All of that has already been tested. However, we went ahead because we wanted to satisfy the county. We went ahead and had an FAA study conducted, because I want to comply with everything. If you got questions, you got, I want to do whatever you want me to do. The answer to your question, Mr. Commissioner, on how long the study is, we started the study probably a month ago, and these things typically take forty-five days. So I'm estimating any day now that we'll hear a clearance from the FAA. You know, if we don't get that, we can't put the tower up anyway. As far as the, the NEPA study and all that, we don't think that'll be a problem, but we also wouldn't be able to put, that's federal, so we wouldn't be able to put the tower up if it comes back negative, so. And of course, our engineer who's here tonight also with me, and she can answer questions, but she spoke to that in the site plan. It don't seem to be a problem, so. That's where we are. That's why we're asking for the land. The tire site will be remote. In other words, there will not be a lot of traffic in and out of there. Maybe eight or ten times a year, we might check on it, maybe not that much. I don't live at tire sites. I don't want to be there. Only time I'm there is if something goes wrong, and Lord knows, I don't want anything to go wrong. So we'll, we'll, that's basically what it'll be. And the, as far as the tire itself, Attorney Jones spoke to that, and it's small enough, it's eighty-four, eighty-point-five feet tall, and it will not, I, I don't think it's going to be any problem with view or anything like that because most of the trees that are around there are taller than that tower. But if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to answer anything I can, and my engineer is also here as well.
So if I'm understanding this, Mr. Jones, I'm going to refer to this question to you. You, you concur that if there's any issues that would be concerning to the FFA, this tire would not ever get a permit to be built or their approval? Is that, would you concur? That is true. In other words, are we going out on a limb in any kind of way, contingent upon waiting for final approval of the FFA? Or can the FFA tire, can the tire be, can this radio tower be built? And then somehow wind up being frowned upon by the compliance folks at the FFA?
Well, we need to discuss that with the applicant in terms of the timing. So Pastor, you're waiting back to hear from the FAA?
Yes, sir.
And you, you, you will be receiving a certification of approval, you anticipate in another how many days?
Well, I'm hoping just any day now that they will approve it, but, but the answer to your question in these cases, the Federal Communications Commission does not issue CPs if it's going to be a violation of the FAA. There, there are guidelines that they go by to issue these construction permits. And they're not going to issue one if it's in a flight zone, because they could be liable or in trouble, so they're not going to do that. They don't do that at all. I don't know what documentation, you know, actually, that you would be looking for, and I even looked myself to try to provide something immediate. Our problem is that if we don't get this up by September second, we will lose the construction permit and the whole station will go down. We've worked on it for five years, and the reason we're late on it, we're not, we've tried to find land to be able to put it. Of course, you know, we, also, I, I'm going to plead ignorance and, and say upfront that I didn't know what I was getting into as far as zoning and all this kind of thing. I didn't know to my ignorance, and I apologize, and I've been in radio for, well, I started when I was twenty-year-old. And I've been, been in radio for many years, but I've never put a station up from the ground up. Therefore, I didn't realize all the zoning regulations, so it's took us a little while to get here where we are. But we're on a time crunch for that. I would be happy to do this, though. I'd be happy if it, if it would satisfy the county. I'd be happy if it would satisfy the county, if you would draw up some sort of a waiver or paper, you know, stating that we would not go ahead with construction of the tower if the FAA, you know, came back negative. I'd be happy to sign any document that you want, that you'd like to produce or generate due to the fact that we're on a time constraint. If I have to wait for another commissioners' meeting, I'm dead in the water. I don't think there's any need in me coming back in July. I think the project's gone. I'm already in for $35,000 on this, and I would, yeah, I think it's going to be a great service to the community. You know, I have a lot of people supporting it, you know, a lot of people that, we've already made the announcement on it countywide, but we've not said a lot about it lately. You know, we just wanted to come before you with it, but it is, a lot of people are excited. Everywhere I go, they want to know, hey, how can we get the station better? And you'll be able to get it much better, the Mount Airy, King, Pallet, up in the southern Virginia area here, you're going to be able to get it. But the FAA is not a problem, because we, you know, and the engineer can speak to that also, because that tower is only 80 feet tall, you know, that's, and plus, on towers, you may not know this, Commissioner, so I wouldn't help you on this also. Federal regulations, now, I don't know, Surrey County ordinance may be a little different here, so we, you know, we would have to do what I guess you wanted done, I assume. But federal regulations, you don't even have to light a tower under 200 feet tall. That's why sometimes they build them 199 feet, because you don't even have to light one if it's under 199 feet. And the FAA doesn't require anything because the tower's that small.
Hey, if the board will give me one moment to finish writing up an additional, I believe this is covered in condition number one, but I'm going to make clear.
Well, he says he can't even build it at all if he doesn't get that FAA paper anyway, so it's probably, I mean, I don't mean to nitpick the gentleman to death, but.
Is that an emotion? Contingent upon?
Well, it needs to be.
Contingent upon FFA approval.
Well, that's already in number one. What I've started to put on here, number six, and we just, because it has to be in writing if we have a condition. So, and we could just have the pastor sign this.
Yes.
Or initial this. Tower will not be installed before applicant provides county with written confirmation from the FAA. That's good.
Yeah.
So.
We have your phone number while we're waiting. We have your phone number while you're waiting.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
And again, I think it's covered in number one, but my job is to nail this down, to make sure that the board is satisfied, and the pastor has graciously offered now to clarify that. So if you wouldn't mind approaching Reverend, I know that you have some issues with site, so if your wife could take a look, excuse me, your partner could take a look here, number six. Yes, if you'll just initial it, and we're on TV, so I think that's good enough.
Let me clarify one point. I mean, technically, I guess we could put the tower up, but if the FAA come back negative, they'd just make us take it down, so we're not stupid. We're not going to do that. We comply, believe me, we comply with every rule of the FAA, the FCC, everything. I want to do that, and that's why we went ahead and tried to get everything done that y'all wanted done, because, you know, we want to be in compliance. And I know this is new to the county. I know it's new to you. You don't get a radio station every day. That's not, I mean, probably we haven't had any new radio stations in the county since, well, good, what, 50 years, I guess, the stations in Mount Airy have been on the air, and I know WI-FM's been on the air over 50, 60 years. So this is a little bit of historical, and just to say this, Mr. Chairman, also, you know, we do provide local programming, like warnings, watches, tornado warnings, tornado watch, all that stuff will be able to alert the county a little bit better with an FM station. You know, people listen to FM more than AM, and we feel like that's vital to us surviving in the next 20 years, because people are turning away from AM, and we'll be able to serve the county a lot better. It will be in the public interest to do this, but that, of course, is up to y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Cuthbert.
How far west will your? I live to the west.
Okay, well.
How far west?
Let me explain that just a second. We are going to have to run what's called a directional antenna, because there is a 90.9 in North Wilkesboro. We have to protect that, and we have to protect the 90.9 in Greensboro. So east and west, sir, we're not going to be able to go as well as we are north and south. I can't exactly.
We need to possible over there just as bad as they do back over here.
Yes, sir.
Ricky, Pastor, maybe even more, you think?
Well, I know we're on TV, and I've got to be careful what I say. I won't say which one of them, but we have offered to purchase one of the 90.9s, and if we purchase it, then, of course, we could eliminate that, take it out of the way, and then we would be able to have the power. We wouldn't have to run the directional. But for a while, we'll have to run the directional antenna. I think to answer your question precisely, it's a 5,000-watt station. I think it's going to shoot 5,000 to the north, 5,000 to the south, and to the southwest will be 2,000 watts, and to the southeast, 2,000 watts. I believe it's so that we do not interfere with other stations.
What mileage is that?
It's going to be really hard to say. It's estimated that it will cover 50,000 people here in the county. I'm hoping that it will run the I-77, is what I'm hoping, at least, that part of it over, and it's going to get more into King and Pallet that way and Stokes County, I think. With FM, you really don't know until you put these things up. For instance, just to show you how FM works, I have a 250-watt translator in Sparta. We own a station in Sparta also. Believe it or not, I live quite a ways from Sparta, and I can get that thing clear as a bell at my house. So you really don't know until you put these things up. You just cross your fingers and hope. I know for the immediate area, it's going to be great, the outlying areas, it should be good. My goal would be to get in the Elkin area. We've wanted to do that for a long time. If we don't, then we'll just keep digging and trying, and we'll come up with something later to do that with, so.
You get him a little bit, he'll be all right.
Yes.
Yeah. I probably need a whole lot.
I will now open up the public hearing for ZCR 1267. Anyone here to speak for or against? All right, I'll close the open forum, public hearing. I have a motion, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, this board, approve rezoning case number ZCR 1267 from current zoning RG to proposed zoning of CB conditional with all the conditions that's been talked about and listed here within, as well as a statement of consistency. And I believe that this board would approve it due to the fact that this zoning amendment is consistent with the Surrey County Land Use Plan and is reasonable and is in the public interest.
And that would be to incorporate, Commissioner, in your motion, the findings of consistency and reasonableness by the planning board.
So done, so said.
All right, motion by Commissioner Tucker. I'll gladly second that one. And any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Look forward to listening. 90 point?
90.9.
90.9. All right. Thank you, sir. Thank y'all. Great job. Two for two tonight.
That's good.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Adrian.
All right, next on the agenda is Ms. Laura Neely, Finance Officer, Monthly Finance Report. Good evening, Laura.
Hello. Okay, so for the general fund, the revenue is currently at a total of 79%. I do want to note that we have already exceeded our budgeted revenue for property tax and prior year's taxes and fees, and I anticipate we will meet or exceed motor vehicle tax, sales tax. Sales tax, I do want to say, since I did this report, it's for the end of May, we have received about three more million, so that's a bit higher. We have about seven more million total to meet our budget, and right now, we're sitting exactly at 100.44% of collections thus far for the budget. And that other three million that we just received is not reflected in this report. But I do anticipate we will meet or exceed our interest earnings, our fees for services, grants, and miscellaneous, and probably our franchise tax. We came in a little short on the state beer and wine tax, about 15,000 short, but all else looks like we will meet or exceed. For our general fund expenses, we are currently sitting at 85.5%. Back on the back of the report, for the landfill fund, the revenues in the sale of recyclables is 159.6%, and in the landfill operations, 77.2% for an overall of 79.3% of revenue in the landfill fund, and the expenses are sitting at 81%. Our current bank account balances through the end of May, total 62,710,194.85. Anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the hard work.
Remind me again when you get your, I know we're in arrears on sales tax. When does your last report that shows the end of the year come in? Is it September?
It'll be September.
Okay.
And then we'll be able to show you the final numbers.
And you'll have, and pretty much everything will be finalized by then?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, next, Chris Pinoff County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is to follow up on the board's budget work session on June 3rd. You have some information in your packet that Laura put together last week. One is a summary of the budget work session that looks like this. It's a one-pager, so that you could see the various changes that were basically consensus of the board at the meeting. She's also included what would amount to, you know, what you would see is the pie chart for where you would be with the current changes to the recommended budget by function for next fiscal year for both expenditures and revenues. And then, of course, basically, a budget ordinance, a draft budget ordinance, which is the spreadsheet document with expenditures for fiscal year '25, '26. It also includes the revenues, as well as the approved tax rates, not only the countywide rate, but the school district rates and the fire tax district rates. And then finally, she also included the short form with all of the changes. As you will see in the blue column, it says adopted budget. Of course, you haven't adopted it yet, but that would be the column that would reflect the adopted budget. Currently, it reflects those changes made to the recommended budget on June 3rd.
No changes here that wasn't recommended on that meeting. Mr. Manager?
The only change, I think Laura, she'll come up and talk about the sheriff's budget and the change there.
There are actually two changes. One is very small. We actually received the final ADM number, so we had to update the spreadsheet to reflect the current expense for that, because that is what our AP goes on every year. But the big one that I want to talk about is the sheriff's department budget. The capital request decreased. It is about the in-car cameras. Actually, the total cost that was put in the capital request, the $472,000 request, that was over a five-year period. So annually, that will only be $97,920. So the total request went from 472,000 to the 97,920. So I took that off of their budget numbers in the short form and on the draft ordinance, and that decreased the fund balance number.
Will that change demand any interest payments on the county's part for paying it off in a longer amount of time and spread it out in payments?
That was the agreement, that was actually the subscription agreement the whole time. It was just not realized until last week or the week before last that that's what the deal was. So it does not include any extra fees or anything. The total cost over the five years will still be that $472,240.
We can spread it out, but no extra cost to the taxpayer?
I think there's actually a discount. The incentive written on this quote is, they took off a total of $35,800 to subscribe for the five years.
That looks like, to me, a no-brainer.
Can you just tell them on the ADM change, it was an increase in total dollars?
It was an increase in total ADM, but that was insignificant in comparison to what we saved over here from taking the 472,000 out and replacing that with the 97, so.
Is that ADM, is that, are those, we have it in blue here in our sheet, is that the new current updated ADM numbers?
12.8 million, yes.
That is correct. We updated it on the short form.
Elkin 963, that would be Surrey County students, obviously. Mount Airy 1708, and Surrey County 6,963. They're up from 9,609 last year, so 50-some students.
I think it's about 25. I think it's 25 additional students.
Okay. The, and so the savings from the, going down from the 472 on the sheriff's department budget, we're going to, how are we incorporating that into the budget? I'm assuming we're keeping the tax rate at whatever we had here, whatever it was, and...
Well, that is actually completely up to you guys right now. What I did with it, so you can see, was it just took the appropriated fund balance number down.
Right.
But I did do some calculations, if you'd like to hear them, about the tax rate. Let me grab those. Okay, so right now, in the short form, you have, the tax rate is 51.3 cents, and that was where we left it after the last budget work session. So the below are options.
Revenue control was what? Tell me what revenue control was again.
49.6.
Okay.
49.
Let me find it on the revenue page. Is that correct, Chris?
Yeah, everybody's, yeah, 49.6.
Okay. So it's at 51.3 cents right now. If you brought it down to 51.2 cents, that would add 79,170 to appropriated fund balance. 51.1 cents adds 158,340 to appropriated fund balance, and 51 cents would add 237,510 to appropriated fund balance. So if you went down to 51 cents, that appropriated fund balance number would be 9,4498.
Which would be a little bit over a penny tax increase, 1.4 cents.
It was.
You know, I don't know about you guys, and of course, I don't want to do all the talking here, but I'm interested to hear what the county manager has to say about that extra money, if we need to just keep the tax rate where we had at 51.3 and take less fund balance. You see what I'm saying? What is your?
That's the conversation I had with Laura last week, when we, what do we do with it? What do we recommend? And I just told her immediately, I would lower that fund balance number.
Yep.
And that's why it's presented this way. You know, I can only go on what I've heard, feedback I've gotten from individuals in the public, and, you know, I think the variation of the tax rates from 51.8 recommended to 51.3, I just didn't get any negative feedback. That doesn't mean there's not any out there, but normally, I get a lot of feedback on recommended budget, and I just didn't get any. I don't know about you all, but I just didn't get any. So I'd be comfortable leaving it where you had it on the 3rd and lower that fund balance number.
And that was 51.3, correct?
Well, the biggest thing I've, and we've all discussed it, you know, we didn't budget any vehicles, ambulances, sheriffs, deputy cars, anything that the county provides vehicle-wise, we didn't budget any of. So God forbid, we wreck an ambulance, wreck a deputy car, or two or three, going to eat into that pretty quick. Uh, gonna eat into that pretty quick. Uh, so, you know, are we, are we trying to fool the public, or are we gonna be honest? And like we said, it's a tough year. It's a very tough year for us and for everybody. And uh, so if we do have a couple of those accidents next, in this next year, uh, there goes everything that we tried to save. So I'm, I'm good with where we're at now. That's just my stance.
I, I, I would concur. I think we've cut it pretty lean for the taxpayers and citizens of Surrey County that supports all these good things. And uh, if we've figured out a way to hold our money in our pocket a little longer than to pay it over the increments of five years, I'd say we've, we've cut it about as lean as we can, and I would recommend that, that the manager's suggestion of keeping it at fifty one point three is discussed prior to tonight would be my suggestion as well.
I'm there.
I'm there, Chris.
Yes, I, I'm, I'm there as well. I, Mr. Chairman, I did want to have a little discussion about one of the, uh, about some of these fire chart, tax chart here. I wanted to, uh, Laura and I had a little discussion on that. Do you, you want me to do that now?
Uh, sure, uh, you, uh, Commissioner Hyatt are on the fire board, so.
Um, and Laura was kind enough to get me some numbers here. I um, I know we've, uh, well, this will be the, I mean, we're, it looks like we're gonna raise uh taxes uh four, three, seven, so one point seven cents. One, and a penny in Surrey County is seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, I think.
Yes, um, but just to note, we are budgeting this year at ninety-seven and a half percent.
Okay.
I question.
Um, the um, and you know, we, all over, I, I know we, we've got a lot going on with the fire departments and a lot of things in the offing, and maybe some restructuring there. And we're gonna keep those at, at revenue neutral. I did, I did wanna look briefly here at Mountain Park, and Laura, help me out. I don't wanna have a school lesson here, but um, I've, I've been busy and I, I have a full-time job too, and I, I hadn't been able to call you in. My apologies. Um, what, what did Mountain Park request this year?
What did they request this year? Do you, uh, let's see, do you?
Um, do, do you have, let's see, I have, I have my sheet here, but it don't, let's see, uh, well, yeah, right here it is. They requested um, hundred and eighty thousand. Yeah.
On the back, okay.
Hundred and eighty thousand um, that they were gonna need.
Yes.
And I went to a finance meeting with them, their accountant was there, um, and they were talking about that new fire station at Devotion. Um, and you know, there's a lot of discussion about ISO rates and all that stuff. But Mountain Park, looks like this year they had a hundred and forty-four thousand, six sixty-one in revenue. Now to one eighty, now that's a big jump. That's a big old leap. Um, and their tax rate now is uh seven point three cents. Is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
Let's see, it is seven point three. That's what's on this tab back here.
Yeah, seven point three. And they were wanting to get that kind of revenue, they would have to go to um. I don't know.
Now, um, okay, so let me explain this back page. That would be the seven point three cent tax rate would give them one hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. Because that would be coming up from the revenue neutral rate.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Well.
And how much of an increase is that within, thirty-five thousand? That what that thirty-five is?
Thirty-five.
So wha- what are they now? I don't have my other sheet.
Right now, this is the current.
One forty-four, sixty-one.
Okay, right here, yeah, this is it. So current rate is seven point three cents. The revenue neutral rate is six point five three for Mountain Park. Um. And for Pilot Mountain, Pilot Knob, um, the current rate is uh, three point two one cents. Uh, no, excuse me, three point seven cents.
Seven.
And the revenue neutral rate is three point two one.
Yes.
Um, that would give them the same amount of revenue, but according to Mountain Park with that new station up there, and I, I guess I di- I didn't, you know, they, they've never had a tax increase, and I certainly have never been one to advocate for a whole lot of tax increases, but you know, I'd sit there and listen to it and um talk to their accountant and all that stuff, uh, who's the accountant at my church, actually, but uh. Um, s- so one cent, I, I guess, wha- what would it, what would the tax rate need to be to get to the one eighty? I mean.
That's, it would need to stay at seven point three.
Yep.
Oh, it would need to stay at?
At where it's at, current.
Where it's at, instead of going down to the revenue neutral. So, okay, which would be six point five, which would be a four point? Well, that'd be a it would be a uh, point eight, point eight cents, point
Point seven, seven.
Point, yeah, almost eight tenths of a penny. Yeah. Which ain't much. Um. I uh, you know, I, I'll be honest with you, I, I don't like tax increases. I've never voted one. This is the first tax increase that I will have ever voted for since two thousand and ten. Um, as far as a general property tax increase. I know we've done some things on some fire departments, but they do have a new substation at Devotion, and I know we're, we're in, there's some things in the offing here on the restructuring and the tax rates and all of that. But I don't want them to fall and come up short um, in their finances. And s- you know, eight tenths of a penny.
Did, did they initially ask for a tax increase?
They have never asked for a tax increase. As a matter of fact, they said they never wanted one, but then they built the station at Devotion.
Did they ask, or did they come?
Yeah, 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 they did. That Ma- that Mountain Park.
Pilot, Pilot, uh, Mount Heart and
Need to go get my budget.
Central Surrey.
Central Surrey. And I don't, I know Central Surrey's had tax increases, and I, I don't know about Pilot. Uh, well, I don't, and we, and we've got those history sheets, and y'all have such tremendous documentation, but I didn't bring a lot of it with me, but I guess my, my point is you know, there was, well, there's three departments there, and, and I, I'm, I know we're gonna do some restructuring and all that, but in the meantime, I didn't want them to come up financially challenged with what they're facing with a new substation at Devotion. And, and of course, all this could change when we, you know, and when we get into broader discussion about what we're gonna do with the the structure of the fire departments, and, and if we're gonna make some substantial changes even to the tax rates. But I've, I've never advocated for Mountain Park for a tax increase. In fact, they, they never wanted one, but um, I am now. So I'd, I'd like to keep them at the, at the current rate, which would, which would be a point eight, eight tenths of a penny, uh, which would, I think um. Get them, or leave them, or, or would make up for their substation at Devotion. And Devotion's one of the under, I mean, there's just, you know, I mean, you can, you can't get to Devotion. I mean, it's isolated, it's really isolated. So I don't know what my fellow board members think about all of that.
Any discussion? To get them to a hundred and eighty, you would have to leave it where it's at. That's what they need, is a hundred and eighty.
That, that's what they requested, is, if I'm reading this right, is that what they requested there, so?
Eighty, one twenty-three.
I would like to know, do we have any more information on where um, Central Surrey is, with Dobson?
I believe that um, their process will conclude at the end of the next fiscal year. If um, and I'm gonna put an asterisk on that, because it's been a while since I've gotten some information. But I do plan on talking to the town managers as a group soon, and um, I'll, I'll be sure and raise that with Jeff. But um, because that's gonna affect a lot of what we do if, if there's a merger of those two.
I can go and um, get the large budget binder and give you more information, if you'd like me to, about these requests. Um, I do want to note that um, Central Surrey is one that had a, there was only a few that had an actual decrease um, with the revenue neutral rate, and they are one of those that will see about a sixteen thousand dollar decrease in revenue with a revenue neutral rate.
Well, I, you know, I, I think we've done as good as we can do. I mean, um, as a matter fa- matter of fact, I, I mean, from some of the things I've heard around from other counties and different places and municipalities, uh, I, I think we've, we've done very well. Of course, sales taxes saved our bacon the last ten, fifteen, twenty years in Surrey County since we passed the extra quarter cent and uh, which is bringing in close to four million dollars now, or four point two?
Yes, yeah.
Um, you know, when I came on the board in two thousand and ten, it was bringing in, I don't know, it was about six hundred thousand a year, I think.
Yeah, it wasn't a lot.
Yeah, it wasn't much, but uh, we have, we've really.
Central Surrey would be a decrease, because.
A slight decrease.
Not a minus, it says one seventeen, nine seventy-five.
That is if you left it at the, their current tax rate. But um, if you look over in the blue, their real and personal revenue would be two hundred and fourteen thousand and one pi- uh, one dollar. And then I've got the valuation estimates from two thousand and twenty-four. Um, and the estimate at ninety-seven percent for real and personal was two hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-one. So they lost a little valuation.
It is conceivable that whatever we do to these tax rates, if in fact, the fire budgeting system changes dramatically, and it may or it may not, you guys are on that committee, you, Commissioner Hyatt and Commissioner Harris. But all this stuff is subject to change, and uh, whatever we did tonight would be a temporary, possibly a temporary change.
Exactly.
Depended upon a final look and uh, how, how all these departments are collectively funded, once that change might occur. And it looks like to me that there are going to be some significant changes. Uh, and uh, I think right now we have a, all good fire departments. I think some of them are uh, a little more comfortable with their budgets than others. I think some struggle a little harder than others, and I think some don't struggle as hard as some of their others. So whatever we do will be temporary, and we certainly don't want anybody in a crunch, but I'm just pointing out, this is all subject to be changed soon.
That is great.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Make that in form of a motion?
Are you talking about passing the budget or the fire tax?
Well, it's, it's all ro-.
Yep.
What I would recommend you do is if uh, whoever feels inclined to make a motion to adopt the budget um, with the changes you had before you agreed to on June third, and then any of the changes or alterations you wanna make, just make, re-list those. And then let's make sure we get all of that.
Yeah.
Before there's a second, make sure it's clear, and then we'll, and the chairman can call a vote.
Anyone like to make that motion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to pass the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget with the um, changes that we have noted um, at our prior budget meeting. Um. Which includes a general um, tax rate of fifty, fifty-one point three. Um, as well as a um, the special school taxes to remain the same, and the fire taxes remaining the same, except with.
Can you change that to say the revenue neutral rate?
Yeah, the, the, the revenue neutral rate for fire taxes, yes.
And school.
Um.
School.
And the school tax, yes, yes, I meant revenue neutral, yeah. Revenue neutral rates on the schools, revenue neutral rates on the fire departments, with the exception of Mountain Park being a um, staying the same, which is a point seven, seven, is that what you said?
Um, point seven, seven, that's the increase, but it would go up to, it would stay at seven point three.
The Mountain Park?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Um, does that get everything, Chris?
Yes.
You sure?
Yes, sir.
Alright. God help us all. That's my motion.
Yes.
Bishop?
Yep.
Alright, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman. We've done about what we can do. We've uh, made a few minor changes to our last consensus concerning the tax rate. I think a fifty-one point three tax rate, considering all other things and inflation and the cost of living and all the other things that local and, and basically, and, and up to national communities and municipalities have struggled with. And how some of those outcomes have been on trying to keep up with the chase and, and keep up with a twenty-plus percent estimated inflationary cost for all business. Uh, I think this board has, has met the challenge, and I think we have kept it lean enough to do what we need to do to provide the services. But we've kept the citizens of Surrey County, the taxpayer in mind, and uh, I think we've come to a pretty good, pretty good solution with our, with our budget work. So I second that motion, and I, I think we've done the best we can.
More discussion?
I just wanna mention um, that this motion includes uh, fee schedule changes for development services, emergency services, as well as public works.
And noted personnel changes, that, was any personnel changes?
There is a one point five percent cost of living adjustment for all employees on the grade step plan. Yeah, and then the personnel schedule that you reviewed, yes.
Yes, including the personnel schedule.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I'm good.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried and budget passed. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Everyone, for all of your hard work.
Oh, thank you.
Final item I have is, this is the resolution. You've had a couple of meetings uh, that's required to be adopted the same night as the budget. It's the resolution by the County of Surrey to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement funds consistent with the memorandum of agreement with the state.
I'll make a motion that we uh, approve or adopt resolution by the County of Surrey to direct expenditure of opioid settlement funds.
Second that.
Motion by Commissioner Goins, seconded by Commissioner Hyatt. Any discussion?
Mr. Manager, I don't have it before me, the numbers, but just for full transparency here, most of these monies are, or all of these monies are opioid settlement monies and no local dollars to be considered with this resolution.
Yes, if, if um, as you probably recall, the uh, substance abuse, abuse recovery department is funded by its own fund. It's not part of the general fund anymore, so this resolution uh, is a companion to that. But it's something we're required to turn into the state.
Yeah.
As to how those funds are gonna be spent.
Right. I just want, want the public to know that that didn't affect our tax rate, nor our expenses on, from our local dollars coming out of our general fund. This is money that passes through us, and uh, we're committed and dedicated to spending it just only for this.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Resolution passed.
We have a request for closed session for uh, legal, and um, also just want to mention for the public that tonight's meeting will not be adjourned. It will be recessed until Friday, June 20th. That's Friday of this week at 9:00 AM. The board will have a couple of items that will need to take up uh, following a public notice that was distributed last week. Specifically, there'll be another closed session on the 20th followed by uh, consideration of a resolution regarding the Northern Hospital District of Surrey County.
All right, thank you, Mr. Knopf. All right, next we have general county business. Anyone have anything?
I'm, I'm good, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I just thank the staff uh, for the work on the budget. It's been, it's been a difficult year and having to sort through all that, but we appreciate all you all did. County manager as well, I appreciate all of your hard work on the budget.
Commissioner Hyatt?
I concur with what um, Commissioner Goins said. I'm thankful for a staff that works hard um, to make sure that we are good stewards of the taxpayers' money, not just the finance department, but all the department heads. It truly takes a village to produce this document.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm good.
All right, I've got just a couple of things uh, about to let it slide by. I hope every, every dad had a good Father's Day yesterday. Kind of mixed emotions for our small community. Uh, we lost two, two young men way too soon. So uh, if you would, keep the Cruz, Wall, Hun Sucker and Burke families in your prayers. They definitely need them tonight. I can't imagine. Do we, do we have a motion to go into, we, we recessed this, motion to recess the meeting and then go into close?
Motion, let's go into close.
Motion going to close, okay. Motion by Commissioner Goins, second by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion to go into.
All right, we're back in, back in session. Do I have a motion to recess till 9:00 a.m. on June the 21st?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
20th, the 20th.
Yeah.
20th, Friday, June 20th.
At 9:00 a.m. Motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We recessed until June 20th, 9:00 a.m.